Good evening, welcome everybody! Thank you for being here tonight. And if you don't live in Oakland, maybe you are wondering why we are not doing our study in the usual place, in the Parnell Community Center. We're still doing from home, as Oakland is still in lockdown. But good news, in a lower level now, we're now on level 3, which means that people can go and some businesses can start up again, including coffee shops and restaurants, so people can get takeaway foods, and construction and some other businesses are back home. But we are unable to meet up in person yet. We will very soon, but not yet. But that doesn't stop us to come together and study online, and doesn't stop you to come here and watch and study with us. So thank you very much for watching us, whether it's live or after, at some point when it saves on our Facebook or Instagram. So, welcome everybody! It's our pleasure to be here, to study Spiritism, and to, yeah, have some connection with everybody that want to study with us. So, as usual, we start our meeting with some news or updates in our group, and Mani is just here now. Hello, Mani, how are you?
Hello guys, very good, very good. Once again trying to sort out our Instagram, but for some reason the connection is still really bad in my place here today, so, but I have a little camera right here. You might see this sometime today, look at that.
Oh wow!
But yeah, so as Oseni was saying, we are still in lockdown, level 3 at the moment, so we will be sharing, you know, our study here with you guys through this Facebook Live, and also through Instagram and YouTube as well.
Yeah, please feel free to leave comments or questions on Facebook or Instagram. We'll try our best to read and get back to you, or have a conversation. So, as usual, we start with some updates or news of our group, and we just started a new study group of ESG, is the systematic study of the Spiritist doctrine, or Estudo Sistematizado da doutrina Espírita, and just started on Tuesday last week. So that means that if you are interested, you can still start either next week, or even the week after. So, in the first 4 weeks, people can join in, and then later on, it becomes a little bit tricky. So, in that study, this study is weekly and requires a bit of commitment, because a continuous one, so if people want to sign up, it's good to have the willingness to participate each week, so the group can learn together and have a good result as well. If you are interested, if you want some more information, just email us, or send a message via Facebook or Instagram, and we'll get back to you and give all the details. This study is online via Zoom, so it's very easy, it's easier for people to participate, they can do from home, and it's a very cool one. So, it's the "Tomo" one, is the first one, and just let us know if you want to participate. Not many news at the moment, we remain doing every Wednesday, the weekly studies online. Next week, we're going to have a lecture, it's gonna be a lecture in Portuguese, and it's called "Aprendemos a Agradecer", and we have a special guest for this lecture. So, it's already advertised on our Facebook page, go have a look, and it's gonna be really amazing. She is in Brazil at the moment, so is an international speaker, and yeah, it's gonna be a great experience for all of us, and everybody is welcome to watch with us later on.
Delma Mura.
Correct, yeah.
Delma Mura, yeah.
Cool. Yeah, so that's it in terms of news, so we can start our meeting in terms of the study now. And as usual, we read a page of the Christian Agenda, just for us to get in the moods of the meeting, for calm ourselves, and to harmonize ourselves. So, we're gonna read together a page before our initial prayer. And tonight's lesson is number 35, "Learn with Nature". "The sun shines on high in order to help everyone; the stars group themselves in order; the sky has its timetable for hours of light or darkness. Although it continues to be linked to the soil, the vegetable abandons the dark hole in search of light so that it may produce. The bot that survived the storm yelled at its passage; nevertheless it continues to maintain its appropriate place. The rock guarantees the life of the valley by resigning itself to solitude. The river reaches its objectives because it has learned to flow around obstacles. The bridge serves the public without making exceptions by asserting itself against its remis. The vase is useful to the potter after enduring the heat of the kiln. The jam shines after submitting to the files of the stone cutter. The canal is able to fulfill its finalities because it does not lose access to the reservoir. The harvest always yields in accordance with the purpose of the sober." So, after this message, that helps us to become more in the vibe of this meeting, we are going to then do our initial prayer, to prepare our minds, prepare our hearts, to participate in the best way we can. Dear God, Our Creator, Jesus, Our Master of Love, of Charity and Kindness, spiritual guides that help us, that inspire us every day. We want to say thank you for the opportunity of being here tonight, and take some time of our busy lives, and stop to reflect about ourselves, our actions and thoughts, and the direction we're giving to our lives in this incarnation. Please help us to be aware, to be paying attention, and learning from the lessons, learning the Jesus lessons that we're gonna be studying tonight. Thank you so much, and would you like to ask permission to start another Al-Ankar Deck meeting? Thank you, so be it. Cool, so now that we got ready to start our meeting, we are going to study our first book of the night, which is Gospel According to Spiritism. When we are in person, we usually ask, "Who was here last week?" But online, that's a little bit tricky. So, what we'll do, we'll do a quick review of what we... Yeah... Oh, I can't hear you, Mani?
I was here last week.
Oh, okay, that's right, I forgot about that. Actually, both of us were here last week, right? So, that's really good. Do you remember what we studied last week, Mani?
Well, we started chapter 16, right? Chapter 16, "You cannot serve both God and Mammon", you know, Mammon of course being one of the representatives of the power of being at that time, so which represents the more the material wealth, the materialistic attachment to the material things. So, yeah, it was pretty much about that. But I think you prepared a very good summary, right?
A very short summary, yes, that's right. So yeah, pretty much last week, we read a few parables, which is something that we need to always remember to not take literally, we need to understand and give some good interpretation in order to make sense for us, because if we take literally, doesn't make much sense. But pretty much last week, we first read "The Salvation of the Rich", which is a parable about a man that asked Jesus, "What is the best way to achieve evolution? What's the best way to improve?" And then Jesus asked the man to sell everything that he has, give all the money to the poor, and then could go and follow Jesus, pretty much. So, very extreme, right? But tonight, we're going to read the explanation of the spirits about that as well, and will make perfect sense. And the second one that we read was "Guard yourselves against Everest", and was a story of a very rich man that was always accumulating throughout his whole life. And he decided to build a fort, build a place, to just keep all his money and all his wealth in there. And he managed to do that, he put all the money there, and exactly on the night when he finished, he passed away. So, there you go, like another lesson of just accumulating, and then we're gonna explain that a little bit better soon. The next one was Jesus at Zacchaeus' house. So, tell us the story of when Zacchaeus met Jesus. And when Zacchaeus met Jesus, he told Jesus that he would give everything to the poor, and that he would not keep anything material with him, and he would pay all his debts, he would pay 4 times of things that he had to give back to other people. And finally, the last one was the parable of the evil rich man, where Lazarus is in this parable, which many of us have heard previously. So Lazarus was in a very difficult position on earth. Financially, he didn't have any money, and he didn't have even foods, and this rich man would not give him anything. He would not even the leftover of his foods, and even the dog of the rich man would come and lick Lazarus. So, but when both passed away, Lazarus was in a much better place than the rich man, and he couldn't understand what was happening. So, all the parables will talk about material things and spiritual things as well, and how they relate. And then Jesus, through all the parables, are giving us some lessons. But to interpret, we shouldn't do literally, and tonight, when we read the explanation, things will be more clear. And so, the next parable that we're gonna read tonight is the parable of the talents. Unless Mani wants to add something to the previous ones, or should we just read first, Mani?
No, I think it was really good, the explanation, of course. Yeah, we mainly read the parables, as you mentioned, you know, we need to try to bring the historical context to what Jesus said back then, to the current situation that we live at the moment, and understand. Especially with the new paradigms and the new concepts and the tenets that the spirits brought with Spiritism, they become easier to understand and find things, like the justice of God, the divine justice, and the law of progress, law of cause and effect, and things that we are able to apply them to these parables, so we are able to understand a little bit better. But apart from that, I think it was really good, because I mean, of course, in each parable, there are many lessons to be learned. You know, for example, that, you know, what, our social status here, they do not, you know, we cannot take them to a different plane. We don't take them when we die. You know, for example, Lazarus was a very poor man, but because he suffered, he knew how to suffer, he suffered without complaining. And then he, when he passed away, he was in a better place than the rich man that had all the wealth, but didn't put the wealth to work for his, you know, for his brother, for Lazarus. So, he was in a much worse situation. So, you know, the future life, it just depends on what we do in this life, and not what we have in this life. So, and we're gonna be able to see that a bit more with the parable of the talents. We can see that Nubia, she's enjoying it, she's just into little hearts, so that means probably she's listening okay, she's here okay, thanks, Nubia. So, if you guys can have any problems, we're having a bit of issues with the internet connection, but yeah, just let us know, okay?
Would you like to read, Mani?
Yes, I can read.
Thank you.
So, this is chapter 16, item 6, "The Parable of the Talents". "The Lord acts like a man who, upon having to make a long journey outside his country, called his servants and placed his property in their hands. In having given five talents to one, two to another, and one to another according to each one's different abilities, he departed immediately. Then, the one who had received the five talents went out, did business with the money, and gained five more. The one who had received only one talent dug a hole..."
No, the one that received 2 gained 1?
The one who received 2, sorry, 2, gained 2 more, the same way, sorry. But the one who had received only 1 talent dug a hole in the ground, and hid his lord's money therein. Sometime later, the servant's master returned and called them to give an accounting. The one who had received 5 talents came and presented him with 5 more, saying, 'Master, you placed 5 talents in my hands; here are 5 more that I have gained.' His master responded to him, 'You good and faithful servant, since you have been faithful in a small matter, I will entrust you with many others; share in the joy of your master.' The one who had received 2 talents soon presented himself, saying, 'Master, you placed 2 talents in my hands; here are 2 more that I have gained.' His master responded to him, 'You good and faithful servant, since you have been faithful in a small matter, I will entrust you with many others; enter into the joy of your master.' Next, the one who had received only 1 talent came and said to him, 'Master, I knew that you are a hard man, who reaps where you have not sown and gathers where you have not scattered; thus, since I was afraid of you, I hid your talent in the ground. Here it is: I am returning what is yours.' The master, however, answered him, 'You evil and lazy servant, you knew that I reap where I have not sown and gather where I have not scattered; thus, you should have least put my money in the hands of the bankers, so that upon my return, I could have withdrawn with interest what was mine. Therefore, let his one talent be taken from him and be given to the one who has 10; for to those who already have, more will be given, and they shall have in abundance; but for him, who has nothing, even what he seems to have, will be taken from him. Let that useless servant be cast into outer darkness, where there will be weeping and gnashing of teeth.' Matthew, chapter 25, items 14 to 30."
Cool, thank you, Mani.
No problem, so there's a lot of things to take from this, right?
Yeah, definitely. I think one of them is that really we need to learn how to have faith and confidence in ourselves, and confidence in all the potentiality and the seeds of goodness that was given to us. We do learn with the spirit that we were all created simple in ignorance, but even then, we are giving seeds of charity, kindness, all the virtues that we are still to develop. And some of them, we have started developing, but not all of them. But we need to trust in ourselves, we need to trust in God and Jesus, and if we don't use, then we kind of, they get stagnated. We're not gonna lose altogether, but gets stagnated. And the more we practice, the easier it is going to be to practice more. So, for instance, the more we practice charity, the more we'll be able to do better in the future. So, it's really a matter of paying attention, and analyze ourselves, and being aware in our daily activities, and see what we can develop in ourselves. We still have lots to develop, it's up to us, and we need to focus on that to get some results.
Yeah, and also just to remember, you know, that where we're going to see in a few chapters ahead, I think it's chapter 24, where "Do not hide the lamp under the bushel", where we explain why Jesus spoke in parables. And once again, he's speaking in parables. And when we talk about talents, when, back in the days, talent was a currency, was a type of measurements of money. So, according to Aruduto Tragias, which is a very, his expertise in, you know, in the translation in biblical passages, and he mentions that it would be, back in the days, one talent would be equivalent of 1 day's work, like would be the wage, you know, of 8 hours of work. So, he gave to one person like a week of, you know, of talents, of money. And of course, when we hear talents, we think more on the gifts, and on the special abilities that we might have, you know. But in that time, he was using currency, money to explain that, which we can, of course, use as analogy, as an example for the potentiality that we all have in different areas, in different fields of... But back in the days, that's what he was talking about, talking about the money. And it's interesting, and I'm gonna bring back the passage and the reading that he says here. It's interesting that, you know, he's comparing God to this Lord, to this master, that he is interesting that he says to, to, see if I can point my... Can you see my mouse there?
Yep.
Yeah, so... And he says that he gave 5 talents to one, 2 to another, and 1 to another according to each one's different abilities. Yeah? According to each one's different abilities, just that to show that not all the servants had the same abilities, same skills. No pun intended, but the same talents to deal with the talents that they were given. So, the master, he knew that the possibility and the capability of each of his servants, and being the wise master, you know, God being the wisest, he gives each of us whatever we are able to carry, whatever we are able to produce. And it's interesting to show as well, that a little bit later on in the parable, as we know, as we have learned, you know, the one that had 5 made, doubled it to 10, the one that had 4 doubled it to, the one that had 2 doubled it to 4, and the one who had 1, he just kept the 1. But it's interesting that the one, you know, the one that received 5, and the other servant that received 2, he say that, "You placed 5 talents in my hands, and then I say, you gave me this responsibility." He did not judge or try to understand the master. But the one that received 1, he says, he says here, let me just replay, add that to you guys. He says, I have to jump between slides. He says, once again on my mouse here, "Master, I knew that you are a hard man, who reaps where you have not sown and gathers where you have not scattered; thus, since I was afraid of you, I hid your talent in the ground." So, it's interesting to see that the one that only received 1 talent, he did not have an understanding of his master. He presumed, he assumed that his master was a hard man, that take from what, take a reap from what he has not sown. So, he has a misunderstanding of the master. So, and he was afraid of the master, that's why he hid his talents. Yeah, so it's important to pick up on these little details that Jesus left us. So, because sometimes, we are given tasks, and we're given possibilities of moving forward, but because we have a misconception of our Father, God, and the divine laws, and the possibilities that are ahead of us, and we become afraid of using the talents, or using the wealth, of using the abilities that we might have to move forward. So, and, but he knows that, and the master of God, God knows that, and he gives that opportunity for us. And it's important that we've been talking last chapter, "Without charity, there is no salvation", so we know that we are all destined to succeed in life, in our spiritual life. So, we're all destined to learn from where we go through. So, that brings also some more understanding about this part of the passage, where he's talking about the consequences of hiding your talents. Because if we take, once again, if we take it literally, we might think that God is not just, because he goes, "Let that youth..." Because he goes, uh, "Let that useless servant be cast into outer darkness, where there will be weeping and gnashing of teeth." Yeah? So, if we take that literally, we might imagine that this servant will be in the darkness, in the darkness, weeping, crying, and gnashing the teeth. No, hangers of dangers. But as we learn from the, from the past, from the past, um, chapter, that's why it's important to, to read all the chapters, to have better context. We can understand that this weeping and this gnashing of teeth and being in the darkness is just dependent on that servant. Once the servant starts to use the talents to multiply it and spread it around, uh, you know, and he will be able to, uh, to receive more talents. Because the more he has, the more he will receive. Yeah. So, that's, the more we know, the more responsibility we have. Once again, we go back to Uncle Ben's law, you know, with great power comes great responsibility. So,
That's right.
So, that, once again, so if you have, if you, if you repent and you change your ways, you will be able to get out of that darkness and that, um, gnashing of teeth and, and suffering and weeping and all that. So, it's important to bring back what we've learned for maybe three or four weeks ago to these lessons now as well. Um, so we can see that God is just, God is merciful. He's not one who reaps where he does not sow, and he's harsh on, you know, on his servants. Um, that it just depends on our, um, our actions as well.
Yeah. And all this suffering is temporary. We need to remember that as well. It's not forever. It's temporary and things will improve and we are going to get through and go to another phase. So, that's another important reminder. So, I think we can keep reading because the next part will be more, we will explain further uh, all the parables in a way. So, we should read a little bit more, which is the providential. I think I can read a little bit and then I pass to Mani again. "The providential usefulness of riches. The trials of riches and poverty. If wealth were, um, insuperable obstacle to the salvation of those who possess it, as might be inferred from certain words of Jesus in interpreted literally and according to their spirits, then God, who grants riches, would have put in the hands of some an instrument of unavoidable perdition, a thought that's repugnant to reason. Undoubtedly, wealth is a very slippery trial, more dangerous than poverty because of its allure, the temptations it creates, and the facts fascination it exerts. It is the supreme arouser of pride, selfishness, and lust. It is the strongest tie that keeps human bones to the earth and diverts their thoughts from heaven. It produces such goodness that we often see that those who go from poverty to wealth soon forget their former condition, those who shared with them in it, and those who helped them in it, and they become insensitive, selfish, and vain. However, even though wealth makes the journey difficult, it does not follow that it makes it impossible or that it cannot become a means of salvation in the hands of those who know how to use it. Just as certain poisons can restore health if used purposely or purposefully and carefully." Can you go back one, please, Mani? So, I think those we could comment maybe this paragraph.
Sure.
Thank you.
This one?
Uh, no, the other one, the first, the very first one. Yeah. So, basically, many of us may think that wealth, it's, um, when we think that wealth is an obstacle that people cannot improve or evolve if they have lots of wealth, that's a very wrong assumption that we do. And sometimes when we go through the parables, we may get that impression. But here is explaining that the problem is not the wealth, it's how we use that. If we use in a good way or if we use, um, in a way that make us so focused, so attached to it, that intensifies some of our vices, such as selfishness, our... Uh, can you go to the next one, please, Mani? Sorry?
Sure.
Yeah. There are some of the vices that is much harder for us to deal with when we have lots of wealth.
Selfishness and lust.
Selfishness and lust. Because then, in a way, the more wealth people have, the more power towards maybe other people's life in terms of if they have others as employees or people that look after and serve them in a material way. So, it's a much, much harder trial, even though most of us, we wish we had more, right? Our tendency is like, I would like to... Yeah. Would like to win Lotto because then I'm gonna help everybody. But first of all, I'm gonna help myself and then after, if I have some leftover, yeah, I can help other people. But it's just, that's why in the parables, it says in such a strong way, the danger. Or it's like a warning for us, hey, if you have the trial of wealth, pay attention, because it's a very slippery one. It's the one that gives you some power in some way and that can make your vices really shine and be very magnified rather than your, um, your virtues, the ones that we need to go through and we need to improve then. So, I think it's very clear explanation.
You know, like that's, it's the strongest tie that keep us bound to earth. Because, you know, we are with, with the possibilities of using that wealth for selfishness, pride, and lust. You know, it becomes such a bond to do material things that we forget. You know, we divert from the thoughts from heaven. And even says that it produces such giddiness, you know? Giddiness, like when you are, you know, when you are in love or while you are, you know, we are not in love, but when you are, you know, we're falling in love. Or if you're so giddy, like, like little, you know, like giggly and, and giddy, like a little bit dizzy and, and, you know, confused, you know? That we often see that those who have, came from poverty and suddenly became rich. You know, some of them, they for, even forget the life that they had as, you know, uh, as a poor person. I mean, we've seen the cases where that's not the case, you know? People that came from poverty became rich and are still very, um, you know, very charitable and helping, like I'll, I'll share an example soon with you guys from the, the quantification as well. But yeah, it is something that touches with our inclinations of, of, of the material things that we have. So, it's, it's very, like you mentioned, it's a very slippery trial, it's very dangerous, you know, for, in this situation that we find ourselves in this planet, most of us, anyway.
Yeah. So, instead of wishing for more wealth, um, yeah, maybe we need to rethink that wishing and wish for other things that we need for our progress. So, maybe we can keep reading?
Yeah, just from the comment, because it says, it says here, uh, it does not follow, says it does not follow, where is it? Oh, yeah. Uh, it does not follow that it makes it impossible or that it cannot become a means of salvation. Because when he, like last week, we talked about, you know, the, the parable that always says, "It's easier for a camel to go through an eye of a needle than a rich man to raise a kingdom of heaven." He doesn't say it's impossible. He said it's easier. We can also, as we explained as well, the camel is not the animal camel, but it's a thick rope. So, if you got a thick rope and you bring it apart, take it apart and make it just a thread of the rope, you'll be able to pass that through the eye of the, of the needle. So, you have to take away the things around the big camel or the big rope. But if you, um, in Portuguese would say like, "Desmeusar", like in Portuguese, in English would be like, if you take it away, if you melt it, if you shred it, if you shred this big rope, make it apart, in this little, make a little, make a smaller thread, you would be able to put through. So, it's not impossible, but it is hard. It's easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle. He doesn't say it's impossible. Yeah? So, that's what is, I think that's what is important to understand that. Otherwise, it would be, and it would be, make no sense. Why, so if it's impossible, so why would God give that to, to anyone? You know, being a just God.
Cool. So, we're just gonna read a bit more and then stop again for comments. "When Jesus told the young man who had asked him about the means of inheriting eternal life, 'Get rid of all you have and follow me.' He did not intend to establish an absolute principle that everyone must sell what they possess and that salvation can be obtained only at such a price. Rather, he meant to show that the attachment to earth riches is an obstacle to salvation. In fact, the young man believed he was in accord with the law because he had observed certain commandments. And he therefore recalled from the notion of abandoning his wealth. His desire for eternal life did not go as far as making such a sacrifice. What Jesus proposed to him was a decisive test meant to uncover what was at the core of his thinking. From the world's point of view, he could undoubtedly have been a perfectly honest man who did not harm anyone, did not slander his neighbor, was neither vain, vain nor proud, and who honored his mother and father. However, he did not practice true charity because his virtue did not extend as far as self-sacrifice. That is what Jesus wanted to demonstrate. It was an application of the principle: without charity, there is no salvation. If these words were taken literally, the consequence would be the abolition of wealth as detrimental to future happiness and as the source of a multitude of ills on earth. Furthermore, it would be the condemnation of the labor that could procure it. This would be an absurd consequence that would take humankind back to its primitive periods and would in, in of itself contradict the law of progress, which is a law of God. If riches and the source of many ills, if they arose so many evil passions, if they provoked so many crimes, riches per se are not to blame but the human beings who abuse them as they do all God's gifts. But this abuse, they render pernicious what would otherwise be very useful to them. But this is a result of the inferior states of the terrestrial world. If wealth could produce only evil, God would not have put it on the earth. It is up to humans to make it produce the goods. If it's not a direct element for moral progress, it is undeniably a powerful element for intellectual progress." Is that the last paragraph, the next one, Mani? Just wondering?
Um, I'm not so sure. I think it is, yeah.
Okay, that's all right. It is... Um, the truth of the, is the last one, the last paragraph, so we're just going...
Yeah.
Okay. "The truth of the matter is that humans have the mission of laboring for the material improvement of the planets. They must reclaim it, cleanse it, and make it suitable to someday receive the entire population that its range can bear. In order to feed this ever-increasing population, production must be increased. If one country's production is insufficient, it will have to be sought elsewhere. For this very reason, relations between nations become a necessity. In order, in order to facilitate such relations, it is necessary to destroy the physical barriers that separate nations and to hinder communications more rapidly. For such endeavors, which are the work of centuries, humans have had to extract materials from the balls of the earth. They have sought in science the means to execute their endeavors more safely and rapidly. However, to accomplish them, resources are needed. Necessity drove humans to create wealth, just as it drove them to discover science. The activity required by these endeavors has increased and developed their intelligency. And this intelligency, which they have concentrated primarily on satisfying their material needs, will help them later on to understand the great moral truths. Since wealth is a primary means of executing these tasks, without it, there would be no more great endeavors, no more activity, no stimulus, and no research. It is with good reason, therefore, that wealth is considered an element of progress." Sorry, that was a little bit long, but was talking about the same idea with many different elements. But really explains why wealth is actually very important, is an element of progress. It's just the way that we use abuse, using a productive way for everybody, for the community, or if we use just for our own satisfaction. So, the element of attachment that is showed, I think, pretty much in the beginning. So, that's the problem. That is where we need to pay attention. Where we start getting attached to material things. We all are in a way, right? But we gotta control that level of attachment. We have to try to balance it out, how much attention we give to the material things and how much attention we give to the spiritual things, to the spiritual values, to the virtues that we need to develop in ourselves. And regarding wealth, we do need to share, we do need to help others. And we do need to pu- put towards progress or put towards the others', um, well-being and not only our one. So, it's very tricky and it shows here as well that it would benefit everybody and will benefit everybody when all of us learn how to deal with wealth better. So, it's not saying that wealth is bad or is only good, it's the use that we put to it. Do you have any comments, Mani?
Yeah. Just in the beginning of this last passage that you read and we're talking about, and we've been discussing as well, about the difficulties and the challenges of having wealth and, and, and not being attached to this wealth. Um, in the quantification, um, of Alan Cardéck, in the fourth book, Heaven and Hell, um, there is a passage, um, that he, he describes in the book. Because the book, the Heaven and Hell is divided into, well, it is a preface, like the introduction. There's a first part, which is the, the more the theory, and the second part is more the examples. And then on chapter two, he has a lot of different messages from happy spirits. Um, you know, then in the first chapters about the passage, the, the process of reincarnation. And then chapter two, he communicates with a lot of, um, of happy spirits. And one of them is, uh, as Countess Paula. And then he goes to describe how her life was in the, in the spiritual world. And she was a very young, she, she passed away when she was thirty-six. She was beautiful, she was rich, but she was a very charitable person. And she's describing, you know, um, um, how her life was when she was there. She said, "Well, I thought my life was great when I was on earth and having the opportunity to help other people. But then, all the riches that I received back when I was, you know, in the spiritual life, you know, was, were, they were much better and I could not even, this, I have no words to describe, you know, of how, how good, um, and how, um, um, the rewards of being charitable are when you are in spiritual life. And so, it's gonna give, is giving us, you know, the idea that if, if you are rich and if you use your wealth for, for the good of others and you're not attached to it, you are in a much better position to keep enjoying them. So, it's not a condemnation. I will, um, I will share a link for you guys here, um, and I'll put it in right now. So, if you guys are able to, um, to, it's a long link, but if you guys can have a look at that later. It's on Cardéckpedia. Cardéckpedia, if you don't have, if you don't have the Alan Cardéck, uh, books, especially the Heaven and Hell, you can access Cardéckpedia and it's a great source of studying, uh, online. Um, and then he goes to, I'll, I'll put this link again in this, in the, in the link below so we can have a look at that as well, and I'll put that on Instagram. Um, also, he goes to say about the necessity of, of fraternity amongst... Um, also, he goes to say about the necessity of of fraternity amongst people, not only individually, but also collectively, because he mentions about, you know, the the world being in the in a position of um receiving more spirits. Because as we know, we are, we have more resources than we are able to um um, to feed, that we have more, we would be able to have more resources to feed and to live among more people, more spirits in this world uh, in peace and in prosperity, if there was no greed and if there was not attachment to the material things. He goes to say, um, let me see here, let me find the correct slide. Um, it's not this one. Um. Yes, the truth of the matter is that humans have the mission of laboring for the material improvement of the planet. They must reclaim it, cleanse it, clean it, I mean, and and make it suitable to someday receive the entire population that its range can bear. In order to feed this ever-increasing population, production must be increased. If one country's production is sufficient, we have to be sought elsewhere. And I mean, we are kind of in the middle of seeing this, you know, with the with the need of vaccines around the world for COVID. You know, some countries, we just in New Zealand, we received some vaccines from Spain last week because we were running out, so we had to ask some from Spain to be able to vaccinate the whole population, more people in the population. So it is necessary, this fraternity and helping one another and helping people, sharing information, sharing resources, sharing medicine, you know, and um, and it is is it is achievable because it's inevitable, it is going to be achieved, but it it will all depend how we are going to be able to accelerate and speed up this process. You know, if we all start doing little by little, you know, in our whatever range we can reach, it will be able to to reach a a a bigger scale, like in a in a global scale. So it is important to take that. I think that was quite important message that I took from this part. You know, um, it's quite important for us to to keep that in mind, you know, that um, for this very reason, relations between nations become a necessity. We need to be understanding one another. In order to facilitate such a relation, instead of destroying the physical barriers that separate nations and to render communication more rapid. And we have seen this happen. You know, and in this, uh, with the communication of technology, I don't know, the uh, all the resources that we have, people to be able to communicate. When I first moved to New Zealand twenty-six years ago, it used to cost five dollars for a minute to call Brazil. And the message was really short, but now it's free and we, here we are, having a conversation. I'm here in South Oakland, Osunizzi is in almost West Oakland, and we are broadcasting to the whole world. So, you know, um, things are moving in that direction, but we still, we still need to work on the possibilities of making that change of of not being so attached to these material things. Because at the end of the day, we're all going to die, you know, either by COVID or or another disease or whatever, whatever situation might happen, we are all going to die. This body will perish, but what you go on will be only all the good deeds that we that we have in our lives. So, um, yeah, that's what I took from this part. Unless, do you wanna mention something else or maybe to show another part of the slide?
Um, no, I think it's really was a good explanation and will help us to reflect in all the parables that we read previously. So if if anybody didn't have the chance to check the other ones, it's just on chapter sixteen. And in our previous study, we comment more about all the parables, but it's a really a good reflection that we need to do, how we're dealing with the wealth. Uh, we don't need to be super rich or have lots of money to reflect on that. We all need to. Because we we make money, we have to pay our bills, we are in the material place. But what is our relationship with the material things that we do have? And how much are we sharing or how much are we accumulating? So I think it's good for all of us to take this this lessons from Jesus uh, with us and reflect in our own situation and how we're dealing with that. And how, yeah, how the world is is dealing with that. Money mentioned about the vaccines and New Zealand is giving out, giving away vaccines to all the islands. If I'm not mistaken, it's for free for them. So with some solidarity, not only New Zealand, but we can see from time to time solidarity happening between countries. And the tendency, as we are evolving and Planet Earth is going to this transition to a regeneration world, is to this to happen more and more until we have less barriers, until we have less borders in a way and everybody be more solitary, not only individuals, but consequently the society and communities as well. We are on the way and we'll get there. But next week, we're gonna be, the next topic is going to be the inequality of riches. It's going to explain why it can be so different. Some countries, they have so much richness, in some others, it's lots of poverty. Why this happened? We will explain the justice of God. And yeah, if you guys wanna have a look, it's number eight of the same chapter. But now we can go to the Spirits Book to continue with our study. So.
Yeah, and it's it's funny how, you know, it's um, it's not planned by us, definitely, but it's planned by the superior spirits that it's kind of linked, you know, because now we're gonna be studying a little bit about the 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 moral and intellectual faculties of humankind, which are in a way our talents, you know. Where's our talents? Where our intellect, our abilities to think and to feel compassion towards others? Where did it come from? You know, where, when, how do we get our talents? You know, that so this is kind of connected, both of them. So it's quite interesting how, once again, the superior spirits are leading us on a on a good, on a good and connected and fluid study, you know. Because now we've, we we saw at the beginning that the master gave five talents to one, two to other and one to the other because they are different abilities and why, where these different abilities come from? Did the master just knew? Not because he knew, because these servants, they had different intellectual and moral faculties that were acquired by them, as we as we understand, through the different reincarnation. So it's interesting to just, when I was studying for tonight, I said, oh, actually, that makes sense why we are studying both of these passages tonight.
Cool.
Well, you read last time, so I'll, I can read this one.
Yes, please. Thank you.
And just a reminder, if people have any comments, either on Facebook or or here on um on our Instagram, we have the, actually, we have the Spiritist Council. Hello, Spiritist Council, they are here watching us. Welcome to our broadcast. So we are on the Spirits Book, uh, Book Two, um, and Chapter Seven, which is, uh, Return to the Corporal Life, and we are on question three hundred and sixty-one. So question three hundred and sixty-one, we, which is, the moral and intellectual faculties of humankind. Where do a person's good or evil moral qualities come from? They reflect the qualities of the incarnate spirits. The purer the spirit, the more the person is inclined toward the good. So a moral person is the incarnation of a good spirit and a cruel person dead of an evil spirit? Yes, but it would be better to say an imperfect spirit. Otherwise, one might believe in spirits who will always remain evil, those you call demons. So it's amazing how the superior spirits try to, once again, clarify to us, you know, that there are no evil spirits, you know, it's just imperfect spirits. Because we already seen in this book, I think it was item one hundred, question one hundred of the of the Spirits Book, where the superior spirits are telling us, uh, showing us a little bit about the the hierarchy of spirits, the different orders of spirits. You know, there's not a, in the categories, there's not one that says evil spirits. He says imperfect spirits. Yeah, so there are no evil spirits. Otherwise, you'd be thinking, oh, they were created evil, they will always remain evil. No, they're just imperfect spirits. And also, uh, once again, that, you know, all these, um, the moral qualities and the intellectual qualities of of a person come from their spirit. It's not something that comes from their body, it doesn't come from their brain or their heart, you know. Because we we tend to say, oh, they have such a good heart. Nothing to do with the involuntary muscle that is pumping blood through our body. It's actually their feelings that comes from the soul, comes from the spirits. Um, would you like to read the next one?
Yes, sure. What is the character of the individuals in whom frivolous and foolish spirits are incarnated? They are toughless, cunning, and sometimes malicious beings.
Do spirits possess any passions that do not belong to humankind? No, otherwise, they would have passed them on to you.
Is it one and the same spirit who gives an individual his or her moral and intellectual qualities? Certainly, it is one and the same. And such qualities will depend on the degree of spirit's evolution. Individuals do not have two spirits within them. Yeah, I think that in the spiritist literature, we see many times about the individuality of us, the individuality of spirits. There is no a group of spirits incarnating in one body, there is no two people, it's always individual. So everything that we do, everything that we achieve, good or bad, it comes with us, it stays with us as spirits, in our spirits or per spirits. So it's very important to always remember this individuality. And in consequence, our responsibility, so everything we do is on us. And not, you know, we can't blame others because we are individual beings that care with us our vices and our virtues and our evolution as well.
Yeah, so it's the same spirit, not other spirits. We can't blame anybody else.
Yeah.
Um, why are the most intelligent individuals who display a highly evolved spirit incarnated in them, sometimes and at the same time extremely cruel? It is because the incarnate spirit is not sufficiently purified. Also, because the person who, eh, sorry, because the person yields to the influence of other spirits who are even worse. A spirit progresses in an imperceptible ascending forward progression. But this progress is not accomplished simultaneously in all senses. Uh, during one period, a period, a spirit may advance in knowledge during another in morality. So yeah, it's quite interesting to remember, you know, that I was talking about the different books on the Spirits Book. We're going to be able to see, uh, in the different chapter, which would be the the Book Three, in the Moral Laws. One of the laws is the law of progress in the chapter eight of the of the Spirits Book. There's a whole chapter that will explain to us, uh, about the law of progress. And it explains to us that we all progress different ways. You know, there's like, like a lot of spirits use that analogy of an airplane that has two wings, the wing of progress, intellectual progress and moral progress. So sometimes a spirit might show a high degree of of intelligence um, and 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 reasoning thinking, but their moral um part, moral progress is not as um, uh, advanced as the intelligence and they will have to catch up eventually. And some also, or something that we mentioned slightly on this here, it say that because the person, um, let me find here, because the person yields to the influence of other spirits who are even worse. So sometimes, even though we are the spirits who give the the quality, the moral and intellectual quality to um to us, you know, we come from the spirit, but we can be influenced. We can, we are, we are highly influenceable um beings, human beings, you know. We, if you, if we can be influenced by Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, internet, you know, and all that, and Google, you know, we can be totally influenced by spirituals, spirits as well. So sometimes, you know, if you are intelligent, but if you have a bad influence from not evil spirits, but inferior spirits, we can be shown to be to be very cruel, you know, extremely, as I say, extremely cruel, like the question shows as well. So it is important for us to be able to to perceive and to understand this this influence when it, when it happens to us and understand that they might happen to other people as well.
What about the opinion, according to it, the various moral and intellectual qualities of humans are the products of many different spirits incarnate in them? Each possession a special aptitude. If you reflect on it, you will realize how absurd that is. A spirit must must possess all aptitudes. And in order to progress, it needs a unified will. If a person were a collection of spirits, this unified will would not exist. He or she would possess no individuality because at death, all those spirits would be like a flock of birds escaping from a cage. People often complain that they do not understand certain things. But it's interesting to notice how they multiply their problems when they have a very simple and natural explanation right there in their own hands. This notion is another example of taking the effect for the cold. It attributes to the human being what the pagans attribute to gods. They believe in as many gods as there there were phenomena in the universe. However, even among them, sensible persons saw nothing more in those phenomena than effects having as their cause a soul, a soul god.
God, yeah.
God, yes.
I cut, sorry, I cut it off before the time.
That's okay. Again, just making sure that we understand our individuality and not a collection of lots of spirits in one one body. And because as we mentioned, it's kind of related to the other reason as well, explaining that we all were created simple in ignorance and we are, we all are progressing, we all becoming better. So, um, Money just talked about imperfect spirits, we should not say evil spirits or we should say imperfect, because all of us are.
It was not me who said that.
Yeah, in the text, you were.
I just, I just put it out. It was me.
So we are imperfect, but not all together, each one of us. And we all have different challenges, different lessons, and different pathways. Some of us are going to get there earlier, some of us are going to get there later, and we will have very different experience according to our actions, our thoughts and our incarnations pretty much, but we all are going to get there. Of course, we need and we can help each other. We learn in our relationships, we learn in our experience, in our families, in our workplace or school. So as we are here, we we live in society, we live in communities, and we can learn a lot from other people. But at the end of the day, our free will, our choices can be influenced by spirits, as we mentioned before. It's going to be influenced by members of our family or our friends. But at the end of the day, we make our decisions and we are responsible for them. And we are the ones that are going to suffer the consequences or get the rewards, depending on how we choose.
Yeah. And then we have the the last part that we're going to be reading tonight, which is the explanation of Cardeck. The physical and moral realms both offers, offer us numerous points of comparison in this respect. Humankind believed in the multiplicity of matter as long as examining it was confined to the appearance of phenomena. Nowadays, we understand that such varied phenomena might very well be no more than modification of a single elementary matter. The various qualities and faculties are manifestations of the same cause, which is the soul or incarnate spirit. And not several souls, like the different souls of an organ, are the result of the same kind of air. And not of, not of as many types of air as there are sounds. The theory in question would mean that when a person or certain aptitudes or tendencies, it indicates that certain spirits had left the person or that others had arrived, which would make this theory, moreover, is the example of manifestations in which spirits prove their personality. and their identity. Just to sum up what Kardak showed us.
Was cutting a little bit while you were reading, but we could see, so you are back now, so I think it was okay. People could move anyway, so it's all good.
Ah, okay. Well, we're almost to sum up.
Oh, was cutting again. Sorry, guys, probably his internet is not, um, is stable at the moment. Uh, let me see. Yeah, for me at least it's frozen. I'm not sure if it is for everybody. But I think he was just trying to, um, do a summary of this chapter and really was just, um, making sure that we understand about the individuality of all of us. Let me see if we can. Mani, can you hear me?
Can you see me now? Can you hear me?
Yeah. Uh, you kind of on and off. Mani? Let me see if we can just put that, that last one while he's not back yet.
I'm not sure if he.
Um.
Stop sharing this one. I think we're back now, Suri.
Okay. Was I, I was out as well? I don't know either. I kept talking, but I'm not, sorry, guys, we're not sure about the connection. And maybe was cutting, but it looks like we are back now.
My, my connection. Okay, um, I think we are back now. I'm just checking on my phone.
Okay.
Looks like we are back.
Okay, that's all right. We got there.
Maybe you can, maybe you can start, I'll, I'll, I'll step back and you can start with, uh, you can start with, uh, we can finalize with the vibration and the.
Yes.
Um, yeah, because I think it's, it's my connection here. I'll just put on a, uh.
The picture? Can, do Anna put a picture for the prayer?
Yeah, I can.
Cool. Thank you. So thank you very much, guys, for, um, bear with us. Even with all the internet issues, we, we are getting there. And what's really nice, we said a little bit more and reflects on the wealth of the planets, uh, reflect on our individuality and our journey as spirits in evolution that today are better than yesterday. And that we can do our best today to have an even better future for us, our society, community and everyone else. So thank you very much, guys. And now we're going to go to our last phase of this meeting, which is the vibration and the final prayer. So if you want to, um, follow us on this vibration, we can join forces and do some good for everybody. So we're just going to make use of the positivity of this meeting, of the good lessons that we could hear tonight. Some of the Jesus lessons and also the spiritist explanations that help us to understand ourselves, help us to understand life. So let's unite our thoughts and our best feelings. And together, let's vibrate for the peace on earth. Let's embrace our beautiful planet with colors, with positive energy. Evolving the planet Earth on vibrations of peace, of love, generosity. Let's also take our best thoughts and feelings to the region of Afghanistan, where the violence still predominates and lots of issues. Let's vibrate to all the people in there, bringing in some hope, some certainty that suffering will pass. Better day will come and resignation will bring a very bright future for them. Let's also vibrate to those that are in hospitals. Some do COVID nineteen and some other do other health issues. Let's vibrate lots of calm, patience and faith. Faith that all disease brings some lesson and that they may come stronger after this trial or after this challenge. Let's also vibrate to those in need on the streets. The ones that in this incarnation don't have a shelter or food. It is a hard trial that they can feel our comfort, our kindness, that they can feel our hug and feel a little bit better. And using this opportunity to vibrate to those closer to us, our family members, our friends, people from our workplace, our neighbors, everybody that is part of our lives. Let's remember those that we find hard to communicate or have a good relationship. Let's embrace them and know that one day it's gonna be easier to just love everybody as brothers and sisters as Jesus did and exemplified for us. And with our hearts full of gratitude, full of happiness, because we are learning, because we are trying our best and because we are having the protection and we having the inspiration of the spirits that we attract to our lives. Would you like to say thank you so much, dear God, Jesus and spiritual friends for all the blessings that we receive every single day in our lives? Please help us to notice them, to enjoy them as little drops of love that comes from heaven. So then, would you like to say thank you very much? And us permission to finalize another Kardak meeting of New Zealand. Thank you so much. So be it.
Okay, we did it. And I think next week we're still gonna be on alert three, so we're still gonna be doing this. Uh, and we take it as it comes, but I think it was really important, even though we didn't have many people participating here. But as we know, the, the spiritual friends are with us and a lot of people will be able to watch this, uh, when it suits them better. So, but thanks for organizing the meetings, Suni, it was really good.
Thank you, Mani. It was really good as well.
See you guys next week.
All right, guys. Thank you. Take care.
Bye bye.